Good morning, I'm Ben Reed, Pro Tem of the Gadsden City Council. We're conducting today's work session by teleconference. This meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live and will be available later on Channel 99, AT&amp;T Universe, and the city YouTube channel. By the way, as a reminder, work sessions give the council an opportunity to review items of today's agenda, as well as any ordinances and resolutions that have been routed for the council's consideration. These meetings are informal and no official actions are taken. Okay, I guess on today's agenda number eight will be the first one. It's a resolution authorizing agreement with Randy Phillips to provide legal services for the Civil Service Board. The amount is $125 an hour. The term is February 9th, 2021 through February 8th, 2024. Is there any question on that one? Any discussion? All right. Item nine is a resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding between the Gadsden Job Corps Center, Chu Gop Education Services, and the Gadsden Police Department, and Edgewood County Sheriff's Office. This renews the joint commitment to maintain law and order on the Job Corps Center property. Anybody got anything on that? Job Corps? Okay, then we move on to the people who request to speak this morning. Let's get over into...
Yes, sir, that's during 11 o'clock.
That's on 11 o'clock, yeah. We do have Justin Overton with the Coussa River Keepers. She's requested to address the council, so I'll recognize her at this time. Are you out there, Justin?
Yes, sir, I am. I'm gonna get my video started. Thank you.
Go ahead, you've got five minutes, so go right with it.
Yes, sir, well, thank you so much. As you mentioned, my name is Justin Overton. I'm the executive director and riverkeeper at Coussa Riverkeeper. I wanted to follow up with a couple of things that y'all received last week and answer any questions that you might have either now or later. But first, I just wanted to reiterate that that A.D.M. hearing that happened, what feels like ages ago, I think to all of us, although it was just a couple of weeks ago, had 14 speakers that came to speak to the A.D.M. hearing officers, and that included six elected officials. If y'all have not had the opportunity to watch that hearing in full, I know there was a lot of conversations from the council about that hearing being a really important part of y'all's process and how are you going to come to a resolution, pun intended or not, about this proposed rendering plant. So I wanted to make sure that y'all knew that was, in my career, that was one of the largest outpourings of folks showing up to these really important public meetings. So please, if you haven't taken the opportunity to watch it, I hope you will. But I gave you all a document during council last week that was an overview of the water permitting process and where Coussa Riverkeeper stands in terms of the permitting process with A.D.M. for the state indirect discharge permit that Pilgrim's Pride has applied for, and how that relates to the Gadsden West NPDS permit, which is National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit. We were able to work with a third-party expert that could take these two permits and see how they work together or don't. And I wanted to just briefly, if you haven't had the opportunity to go through the document itself, I wanted to give you just some highlights as you all are going throughout this process to ensure that you are informed about where infrastructure stands today, as well as ask y'all some potentially rhetorical questions. So as you deliberate internally, you are thinking about potentially a broader or different sort of mindset. So Dr. Burkholder, Joanne Burkholder, is with North Carolina State University's Center for Aquatic Ecology. And what her analysis showed based on self-reported data from Gadsden West wastewater treatment plant is that the wastewater treatment plant is unable to comply with its present permit and capacity to treat the wastewater there. Now, given that Neely Henry is on A.D.M.'s, the 303D list for TMDL, which is the Total Maximum Daily Load, for nutrient pollution, her analysis shows that the excess amounts of nutrients and oxygen-depleting material adversely is already affecting aquatic wildlife, which is important to note that just last week, one of you mentioned that y'all are consistently getting fishing tournaments coming to the lake, right? So I would hope that you would be thinking about that if I'm telling you this information about nutrient pollution is going to impact aquatic wildlife. But really, the crux of it is Pilgrim's Pride's pretreated effluent, that they're going to treat onsite for the first step of this process and then pump through your municipal wastewater system. The receiving wastewater treatment plant is having a problem with compliance, and not just a problem, a chronic problem with compliance. And what we at Coussa Riverkeeper and Center for Biological Diversity have told A.D.M. is that we don't think that the SID permit, Pilgrim's Pride permit, should be approved until the receiving wastewater treatment plant has upgrades or comes into compliance, which leads me to some questions I have for y'all. Gadsden West is taking on the liability for Pilgrim's Pride's waste. That's what an indirect discharge permit does. So some of my questions are, if Pilgrim's Pride is factoring in this wastewater upgrade that needs to happen, is there a potential for a conflict of interest to be indebted to a corporation for a publicly-owned treatment works? And what do these upgrades look like? Because from our analysis and from this third-party expert, it seems that the upgrades that need to happen are the actual treatment mechanisms. And I was curious, as y'all deliberate, just when and if it's possible for this information to be publicly available, because these treatment mechanisms that exist are faulty. So adding new pipes or new lift stations may help move the wastewater through the system, but if the end facility is having mechanical or faulty issues, I feel like that's something that needs to be addressed, at least to look at the concerns of the agency overall, meaning Gadsden West. So I'm looking for potentially any information that, when is appropriate, that can be shared with the public about what the potential upgrades could mean. And in terms of things that are measurable and attainable, not intention. You know, I think most people in this community have really good intentions, but it's the way that things are operated that really is where Coussa Riverkeeper's concerns are. And under the Clean Water Act, this facility is obligated to uphold sections 402 and 301 of the Clean Water Act. So all of this to say is that, you know, good intentions doesn't change the fact that this potential effluent, this pretreated wastewater, moving through the municipal sewer system, is gonna be discharging a shocking amount of nutrient pollution into a lake that is impaired for nutrient pollution. So I just wanted to thank y'all so much. Again, I gave y'all a very big stack of fairly technical information, but I wanted to at least give you, I guess in layman's terms, a little bit of a digest of what the documents contains, because that was weeks of our time, as well as an expert who was very, very shocked by the nutrient pollution that she saw with the excess violations from the wastewater treatment plant, as well as the nutrient load from the effluent from Pilgrim's Pride. So I don't know how much time I have left, but thank y'all so much for the opportunity to address you, and thank you for your service to your community and hearing me out.
Yeah, thank you, Justin. Does anybody have a question while Justin's here?
I have a question for Jessica, excuse me, for Justin. I apologize. Justin, the Gadsden West capacity issue is, I guess maybe how it could be described, or the nutrient issue, is that... Does that stem from our current industrial base and household base? Are they the problem, or is the problem Gadsden West doesn't have the right mechanisms in place or the machinery in place to make this work?
So my understanding of the expert's analysis is that it's an issue of capacity. I don't think it's necessarily fair to say it comes from SID permit holders or from households necessarily. It's the fact that this facility is supposed to be treating the waste that it's permitted within its permit limits, and given the capacity, that any additional load is going to be questionable for the receiving water body that has a nutrient pollution problem. Does that answer your question?
Yes, yes, it does. I mean, I don't know a lot about water treatment plants or anything, and so who would be, who's the authority that makes this decision or makes this determination? Is this A.D.M.? Is this your organization? Is it Gas and Water Works? Is it the legal system? How do we get to the, how do we solve this problem?
Well, to solve the problem would be to come into compliance of the permit, and there'd be some sort of mechanism that would ensure that the facility would operate under its permit limitations. And in terms of whose authority it is, you know, the operator of the facility is given that permit from A.D.M. So the letter that we sent, that cover letter, was sent to A.D.M. to inform A.D.M. that Coussa Riverkeeper is aware of the situation, given the analysis from that third-party expert, and what our concerns are from a permitting standpoint. But given your, you know, role as city councilors, I felt like it was really important for you to understand the nexus of how all of this works, and not only what it means for the lake, but what it means for the fishing tournaments that y'all are consistently recruiting and bringing to the area.
Sure, yeah, we invest quite a lot of money in fishing tournaments. Would it be fair, this is my last comment, and I'll hush and let other people talk, would it be fair then to deduce that not only Pilgrim's Pride would add to the problem, but in any new industry that we would bring to Gadsden would add to the problem?
I think Pilgrim's Pride, yes, absolutely adds to the problem, given that the nature of their waste is going to be high in nutrients and nitrates. In terms of other industries, you know, there are so many different other industries that have, that add to this excess pollution. But at the end of the day, if you're going to grant these indirect permits, Gadsden West or whatever treatment plant across the state is really liable for treating that waste before it's discharged into the receiving waterway. So it doesn't really matter how it came, directly or indirectly. At the end of the day, that permit holder that's going to put discharge into Neely Henry Lake is liable, more or less.
Okay, I'm just trying to determine if our industrial recruitment is shut down because of what you're saying, because if... So you're saying that if it's a non-nutrient-producing plant, then it would be okay that they could come and tap into the Gadsden West, or is it any industrial plant?
That's a really good question, and because I haven't looked at all the different parameters, I've been mostly focusing on total phosphorus, TKN, E. coli, total nitrogen. So given what I've seen with these chronic violations from Gadsden West, I would say that until Gadsden West gets into compliance, that it would be irresponsible for A.D.M. to grant the style permit, this SID permit. And that, I mean, in all honesty, given the long, chronic, ongoing violations, that it's something that needs to be addressed immediately, before any new industry comes here. It needs to be fixed. Needs to be fixed for the fishers and their family, for the lake.
Well, thanks, Justin. I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else got a question?
Yeah, Councilman Reed. Justin, it's obvious that you're pretty well-versed on a number of these issues. So, you know, I'd like for you to come back in response to Councilman Back's question. I'd like for you to come back at some point and really just offer up some suggestions, because we're, again, we're all elected officials, and I'd like for you to come back at some point with suggestions on how we could adhere to some of these environmental aspects and the concerns associated with them, but at the same time, not cripple the industrial recruitment efforts. And I'm not just talking about Pilgrim's Pride at this point. I mean, I'm just talking, you know, holistically. You know, as we're going forward, we want to make sure that as we're trying to recruit new partners, that we're also complying, not necessarily with the regulations only, but being mindful of any concerns relative to environmental aspects. So again, thank you for what you shared. And I guess the last thing, you know, that I'll ask is this, this obviously, in terms of man-hours and effort, is a tremendous project on your part. And, you know, I'd like to understand, or at least let the community and the public know, you know, how you're able to go about gathering as much information as you can. I know you're not an army of one in terms of how you address this.
Yes, sir. Yeah, so, yeah, so Coussa Riverkeeper is very fortunate to be a licensed member of Waterkeeper Alliance, which is an international group of folks, just like me, that are passionate about a single waterway. And so I'm able to work with attorneys from across the environmental community that I call up and say, hey, I have this issue. Who's an expert on it? So I'm very fortunate that I have a lot of people who, number one, I think y'all could admit that, like, I'm pretty persistent. So I badger them a little bit and say, I need you to help me, because this is my river. Help me defend my river from excess pollution. And so I've been very fortunate that this expert came to me through a lot of different other waterkeepers, and given that she's been so well-published, I mean, her short CV was 21 pages. So she is like the creme de la creme of being a wastewater expert. So I'm very, very fortunate to have an army of folks that are really strong in the legal-minded behind me that believe in the values that we're trying to promote at Coussa Riverkeeper, but also we do have this national network of folks that I'm able to lean on, because I am one of four that works for this organization that serves almost 5,000 square miles of the state. And I, believe it or not, I have a lot of other stuff to do than just talk to y'all about this rendering plant. So, yes, thank you for recognizing it as a lot of time and a lot of stress, I think, for us all. So thank you for always being so generous in your time and asking thoughtful questions. I do think if you haven't had the opportunity to read that document, there are suggestions that are measurable and attainable for what Gadsden West can do to get in compliance, because this situation that you're dealing with is a very, not only frightening situation for the lake and for the fishing tournaments, but these Clean Water Act violations need to be addressed. And if they're not addressed with these upgrades that are proposed, and there aren't measurable and attainable explanations for what these upgrades are, I fear that you're not just doing a disservice to the lake, but the economics of what the lake brings to your community.
Very good. Any more questions? Okay, I've got to go back, because I messed up on the pre-council. We have to, one, resolution for next week. It's a resolution awarding bid number 3448 for the 2021 herbicide application project to Edco LLC. Has anybody got a question about that? It's $240,000 for the herbicide program.
Did I see that that's... Ben, I'm sorry, did I see that's a three-year contract at about $80,000 a year?
Mm-hmm. Oh, I didn't know it was Heath Withers. I'm sorry. Is Heath on?
Yes, sir, it looks like he is.
Okay. There's Keith. Okay. If you'd kind of explain this to us, okay?
Yes, sir, this is just the standard herbicide contract that we've had for quite some time. It was just time for renewal. And I believe as Councilman Back said or asked, this is a three-year term contract at $80,090 per year. Edco has held this contract for quite some time, at least while I've been here the last, I think, two times that we've put it out. Nothing has really changed with it. It's the same areas that have been maintained for quite some time. Really, nothing new, just needed to renew it with a fresh bid. Edco is the only bidder received, as has been the case since I've been here. So anyway, everything looked good to us. We were ready to recommend approval.
Hey, are these guys out of Tuscaloosa?
Um, I think so.
Yeah, I think, I just remember us having a conversation about, you know, how we award bids, and as it pertains to local contractors, and you'd mentioned before that there weren't really anybody, there wasn't really anybody in the area who had the qualifications and certifications to take on a contract like this. Is that still the case?
Well, they're the only ones that applied. So we go through our normal advertisement process, and yes, for this, the licensure and certifications are pretty strict because of the herbicides being applied, and just as was stated next to our river, any other waterways, but also any right-of-way. So there's certain licenses that they are required to submit that they have, and if there's any other ones around, they have not, they have not replied to our requests, and so Edco is the only one that we have received.
Got it. Thanks, man.
Yes.
All right, if there are no other questions, we'll take a short break and be back at 11 o'clock. That's all right. And thank you again, Justin, for coming. Good morning, I'm Ben Reed, President, Pro Tem of the Gadsden City Council. We're meeting today by teleconference. Today's council meeting is being broadcast on Facebook Live and can also be viewed later on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the city of guests on YouTube channel. Okay, this meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Alvin Nelson for the roll call.
President Tolles is absent today, and the meeting's being chaired, as you know, by President Pro Tem Reed. Councilman Williams?
Here.
Councilman Worthy?
Here.
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilman Cannon is also absent today, and Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Back to lead the invocation.
Thank you. Let us pray. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you today with grateful hearts for all of our many blessings, meditations, and words be pleasing unto you. Be with us now as we conduct the business of our city and guide our thoughts and decisions. We ask special blessings on those that have lost loved ones and those that battle illness. In Jesus Christ's holy name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Okay, I'd like to begin today's meeting with an update from Emergency Management Agency Director Deborah Gator. Are you with us, Deborah?
I am.
Good. Go ahead.
Good morning. We're going to try something a little new today. First, I'm putting glasses on, because I can't see one of you. There you go. Okay. We're going to try to share screen, and I'm going to give you some information from the web, so that you can find it at a later date and time. Also, first want to mention, last week's second dose dropped through at the venue. It was a success. We didn't have any complaints, except for, from a few people that wanted the first dose and couldn't get it. So that was just one of those things, and we really appreciate everybody that helped out with that. It was Public Works, the venue staff, the police department, the fire department. It was, it turned out really well, and we appreciate that. Okay, we're going to try the share screen now, and what we're going to look at is going to be information that you can use. Can you see it now? Want to make sure before.
Yeah.
Okay. If you go to the Alabama Public Health page, and it's not listed, Alabama Department of Public Health, it's alabamapublichealth.gov, you can find the Corona COVID-19 listing right on the left. And when you choose that, it takes you to an entire list of helpful information, the current situation, it talks about the different dashboards that they have that can give you information, vaccine availability, updates, links, then also considerations for those that are anticipating reopening in full scale. Then there's also, I'll go over to, I'm sorry, I'll go over to this. When you go to one of the links, which is the Alabama Public Health Maps, it takes you to the COVID-19 Vaccine Clinic Dashboard. And that dashboard, I've selected within a 25-mile radius of downtown Gadsden, where can I get the vaccine? And they have locations of all the pharmacies within that 25-mile radius, and the hospitals are listed, but we're not going to call a hospital to make an appointment unless they open a clinic. But you can see all of the different pharmacies listed there, plus the Edgewood County Department of Public Health. Each one that you click on gives you, or that you just hover over, gives you information about the location, so that you can contact them and find out where you can get your vaccine. So that's readily available to all citizens, and we want to make sure that everyone could see where that is and how to get there. If you have problems with that, let us know. We'll be glad to try and help you find the information. Then in talking through some of that, these locations have also agreed all the way through Edgewood County to help some of our school teachers and support staff to get their vaccines. Boaz Pharmacy went to SARDAS this past week to give them their vaccines. Altoona Pharmacy went to several of the West End schools. Then there were some that went to South Side Schools. City of Gadsden is still working with the pharmacies in the city of Gadsden to get all of their teachers and support staff in. So they're working hard to try and get those things started and everyone vaccinated to get back to school in a healthy way. Then, the most current information is listed on our GEC EMA webpage. It shows we're currently at 273 deaths, although our death count has slowed at the moment, so has our hospitalization rates. So have the EMS provider rates of transfer and taking patients to the hospital. Last week with Chief Matlock and our two EMS providers, Amed and Advantage, and their numbers have gone down. Our test positive rate is still up a little bit, as you can see, the 14-day test positive rate there is 14.86. So that's still another thing that we need to watch and see if we can bring that number down. The graphs are added there now, so you can see confirmed by case every day. Then also, this new addition is the Alabama COVID-19 vaccine data, and it tells you exactly the Moderna and the Pfizer doses that were given, and it doesn't break it down by county yet. I had asked for that information, and my message back was that Dr. Harris was not ready to give it out by county yet. So when that's updated, we'll see. The school listing is still there, and you can see that we have 61 right now that's listed throughout Edgewood County, the students and faculty combined. So in seeing that, we just encourage you to use these online tools to find out what you need, or give us a call if you need some help or information. Anyone have any questions today?
Okay, anybody have any questions for? If not, then thank you, Deborah. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Especially where to go. That's very important. Okay, back to the agenda number four. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session. City council meeting held on February 2nd.
So moved.
Clerk, you, I'll need a second.
Second.
Clerk, would you take the vote, please?
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve minutes.
Okay, number five. Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of January 29th through February 4th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, would you take the vote, please?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Very good. Number six, proclamations, Mayor?
Uh, excuse me. For as the city of Gadsden recognizes that the water quality of our rivers and streams affect all of its citizens, the city of Gadsden, along with the surrounding cities and agencies, such as Keep Edgewood Beautiful, the Gadsden Water Works and Sewer Board, have joined together in efforts to improve the water quality in our county. the Gadsden Water Works and Sewer Board have joined together in efforts to improve the water quality in our county. Whereas on February 12th, 2021, the City of Gadsden, Keep Edwah Beautiful, the Gadsden Water Works and Sewer Board, and several other cosponsors will host the annual Water Festival. Whereas this go is, this festival is to educate all the fourth graders in the City of Gadsden, as well as Edwah County, about water quality and to encourage all citizens of the City of Gadsden to become involved to help improve our water quality. Whereas the City of Gadsden is committed to protecting our rivers and streams, we ask all of our citizens to join us in this work. As we work together, we can have a greater impact on our environment and our city. Therefore, I, Sherman Gaten, Mayor of the City of Gadsden, by the virtue of the authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim February 7th through the 13th, 2021, is Water Quality Awareness Week in the City of Gadsden.
Okay. Thank you, mayor. Going on the agenda, number seven, some unfinished business. We have none today. Number eight is a resolution authorizing agreement with Randy Phillips. This is to provide legal representation and services to Gadsden Civil Service Board in the amount of $125 per hour with a minimum of $125 per board meeting, effective February the 9th, 2021, through February the 8th, 2024. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is Randy's good? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
And Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Okay, number nine. Resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding between the Gadsden Job Corps Center, Chewak Education Services, and Gadsden Police Department, the Edwah County Sheriff's Office also. This is a cooperative agreement affirming the joint commitment to maintain law and order with the Gadsden Job Corps Center property. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, clerk, would you take the vote?
Councilman Reed?
Yes.
Councilman Wilson?
Yes.
Councilman Back?
Yes.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt.
Okay. Number 10 is new business. Is there any new business this morning? Okay, number 11, department reports, committees, boards, and so on. Any of those? I don't have any. Do you, I'm seeing it. Our citizen request is next. We have Ken LaFaye, rendering in urban areas. Is Ken with us this morning?
Yes, I am. Let me get my video going here.
Okay, Ken, go ahead. You have five minutes, okay?
Am I permitted to share my screen with a couple of slides?
We were not able to do that, but I did email the information that you emailed to us, to the council members.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much.
Right, go ahead.
Yes. So my name is Ken LaFaye and I am the Director of Sales for Harstle Industries here in the U.S. and Canada. I'd like to thank the council and mayor for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to set the record straight for my industry. To compare the pet food ingredient plant that Pilgrims is proposing to a rendering plant that was built 25 years or more ago is not only disingenuous, it's not a comparison that's based in fact. I'm here today because I'm in a unique position as an employee of the company that provides the equipment that eliminates odor and promotes a healthy air environment in the community. I can speak to the ability of modern technology to protect the natural resources and maintain a high quality of life for the people that work in these plants. The technology is proven, effective, and used in hundreds of places around the world, including plants that are in mere feet away from pristine beaches, sporting fields, and homes. So who is Harstle? Our roots go back over 100 years. Our install base is 120, is in 120 countries. We have over 1,100 employees. We have 75 here in the U.S. In the last five years, we've built 22 full projects similar to what Pilgrims is proposing in Gadsden. And of the last 20 large poultry projects, Harstle has done 15 of those. We're hands down the largest poultry. We're the best world-leading poultry byproducts protein conversion equipment manufacturer. In the U.S., over the last five years, we've done three full projects, three full plants. We have designed those plants, engineered them, fabricated them, installed them, and we've commissioned and started those up. So why does any of that matter? Because we have a track record. We know what we're doing. We do it well. I'm sure many of you saw the CBS 42 report on the plant in Ward, South Carolina. Harstle built that system. It's not unique for news groups or organizations such as yourselves to reach out to projects that we've done in the past. We know that and we encourage that investigation. Just because we built the plant and we've moved on to other projects doesn't mean our work is done. Our work tail is very long. For years and years, cities like yours will continue to look at our past work, whether it's in Eagle Grove, Iowa, Coldwater, Michigan, Ward, South Carolina, perhaps one day in Gadsden, Alabama. The performance of those plants is our legacy. Without a good legacy, we're out of business. We must represent our technology and our abilities accurately. We do what we say we're going to do and we do it well. The, what's different? What has changed over the last 10, 15, 20 years? Well, quite frankly, it's you, the pet food buyer. The pet owners are educated and they're willing to pay a little more to feed their companions. It's that desire to feed the pets healthy, environmentally friendly, sustainable food that's really driving these technologies. So in Europe, high populations or very dense populations, historically, they've had a stronger drive for environmental stewardship, renewable energy, and sustainability. Communities, anytime a plant like this is proposed, there's going to be apprehension. The legislation in Europe is much tighter in the EU than it is here in the States by and large. If the plant is operating as a nuisance, it's shut down. It's simple as that. I had the slides I had asked about that I've submitted to the council. I would like to speak a little bit to those and I hope you'll reference those when it's convenient. I've also asked the Pilgrims actually make those available on their Growing Gadsden Facebook page. The plant in Ward, South Carolina, you heard about that plant? We have homes there that are a few thousand feet away from the rendering plant. The plant, the technology we're making available to Pilgrims in Gadsden is better technology. It's newer. It is, we are an innovation company. The next slide, when we have an opportunity to review those, is a plant we did in Poland. Within a three-mile ring, it is adjacent to a 45,000 community city. There's no complaints. I encourage you, when you reference these slides, to please fire up the Google machine. Look for odor complaints. You're not going to find any. The next slide I wanted to reference was in Bradford, U.K. We're literally feet away from homes and businesses. It's a population of 540,000 people. It's the, as far as the waterways go. We have a plant located in Denmark. And this is beautiful, pristine land. The oysters that they pull out of this waterway sell for $8.85 each. We couldn't operate that plant if we weren't a benefit to the community. If we were a nuisance or polluting the waterways, we should, we would, we would not be there. That's where the technology has come. I understand the Coastal River is, it brings in a lot of tourism. I haven't watched one of your council meetings where you haven't sponsored a bass tournament. I'm here to share that we have built plants that are 1,500 feet away from where the World Surfing Championships are held in Portugal. The fishing there is phenomenal. Our technology is proven, it's effective, and I hope that you will make these decisions based on the facts. We are very proud of our work and the industry that we represent. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody have a question?
I just have one question. Ken, where do you call home? Where's, where's home?
I'm in Annapolis, Maryland.
Is there a rendering plant in Annapolis, Maryland?
There is not, but I tell you what there is, sir. There is a wastewater treatment plant that is in my backyard. And I made, I'm educated as to what the technology can do in a wastewater treatment environment and a rendering plant. So for me to literally, on the peninsula I live, I have the Chesapeake Bay on one side and I have a wastewater treatment plant on the other. And I have no apprehension about enjoying those waterways every summer. So I, that would be as close as I could reference to a rendering plant.
Thanks, Ken.
My pleasure.
Anybody else? Okay, Ken, thank you a lot for coming here. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Our next speaker is Dr. Daniel Whitehead, chemistry around odor treatment for rendering. Go ahead, Doc.
Council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you today. As was mentioned, my name is Dr. Daniel Whitehead. I'm an Associate Professor of Chemistry at Clemson University in South Carolina. Over the past 10 years, my research laboratory has studied volatile organic compounds, or VOCs. These are a group of small molecule organics that comprise the gaseous effluent that comes from many industrial processes, including rendering. So we've studied these VOCs and odor emissions associated with rendering plants and the poultry processing industry. My lab also works on developing new technologies for managing VOCs and odor emissions. The work that my lab does has been supported in part by the Fats and Proteins Research Foundation under the auspices of the Clemson University Animal Co-Products Research and Education Center. Pilgrims Pride, who's proposing the plant in your town, is a member company of these organizations. I'm not here today as a paid consultant. I'm also not here to represent Clemson University in any official capacity. And further, I'm not here to advocate for or against the approval of this proposed plant. Rather, I think it is important that the city and its residents understand the science behind the technology used to manage VOC and odor emissions from modern rendering plants. And so this dovetails nicely with the last speaker. I'm providing this brief statement since my lab is active in this area of study. Now, I'd like to briefly describe for you the standard strategies that rendering plants employ to manage VOC and odor emissions and a little bit about the chemistry that is used to do so. An important distinction to make is that between VOCs, the volatile organic compounds, and odor. Federal and state governments do not typically regulate odor emissions. Rather, what they monitor and regulate are the emissions of the volatile organic compounds, a small subset of which contribute to nuisance odors. Nevertheless, plants that aggressively manage VOC emissions will also effectively manage nuisance odor emissions by default because they comprise a small subset of more common VOC emissions. By feeding gaseous outputs from the plant through specific equipment, the potentially odorous VOCs are removed or destroyed prior to exiting the plant exhaust systems. There are several strategies that are approved and regularly assessed by the Environmental Protection Agency to ensure that plant emissions are safe for plant employees and surrounding communities. The specific equipment that is used are called scrubbers because they effectively scrub away large portions of the VOCs from the plant emissions prior to exiting the plant. Some scrubbers, depending on the chemistry that is involved, some scrubbers use very low pH acidic materials in the scrubber. Some use very high pH basic materials in the scrubber. Some use strong oxidizers and some are designed to remove particulate materials such as dust. The EPA regularly studies these strategies to confirm that they meet government standards for removing VOCs. It's important to note that each independent strategy, whether it be low pH, high pH, oxidizing or particulate, they tend to exhibit between 90 to 95% efficacy in removing VOCs prior to exiting the plant. The use of the scrubbers to manage VOC outputs is really common across not just rendering, but also other sectors of industry, many of which probably exist in your town already. So VOC emission is not a, is not a problem that's limited to rendering companies. So typically, modern rendering plants achieve efficient removal of most VOCs from plant effluent by doing a process called daisy chaining. So what will happen is multiple scrubbers will be employed in sequence to ensure that the exiting plant air is scrubbed with multiple strategies and is therefore clean and free from harmful concentrations of VOCs. So by linking chemically distinct scrubbers in sequence, the strategy ensures that the removal effects of the scrubbers is additive. So the process similarly removes VOC constituents that contribute to nuisance odors. And so additionally, the latest strategy for managing VOC and odor emissions in rendering settings involves collecting high-intensity processed vapors separately from the room air inside the plant. The high-intensity processed vapors are destroyed by thermal energy in what's called a thermal oxidizer. The room air is then separately treated with scrubbers like the ones that I've just mentioned. The key take-home message is that modern rendering plants employ a whole battery of complementary strategies that ensure that VOC and odor emissions are adequately processed. I've spoken with the lead engineer of the proposed Pilgrims plant and their strategy for mitigating VOC emissions and nuisance odors will use a sequence of scrubbers and thermal oxidizers similar to the ones that I've just described. The approach is in line with common strategies that are employed elsewhere that effectively manage VOC emissions and nuisance odors with rendering operations. So this is the same strategy that's used by the plant in Ward, South Carolina, in my home state, that was reported on by CBS 42 a few weeks ago. I thank you for the opportunity to speak today.
Very good. Thank you, Doc. Any questions from us? Anybody?
I have a question. If I could ask Daniel, Dr. Whitehead, a couple of things. I've done a lot of reading on this. November 13th, I'd never heard of a rendering plant. So I have, you know, done all I could do to read. I've read a lot of information that's been provided from a lot of different sources. Can you talk to the ability of the scrubbers to totally eliminate smell and totally eliminate, I guess it's called the VOCs? Are the VOCs, is that the particles that would go out of a smokestack that would fall in and about our, our city?
No. So VOCs are not particulate matter. They're smaller than that. These are individual compounds. And so, you know, the most common VOC effluent from any plant will be something like carbon dioxide or oxygen or nitrogen. So these compounds will come off. And so the scrubbers, like I said, individually, the scrubbers tend to exhibit, based on EPA estimates, they tend to exhibit between 90 to 95% efficacy. And so what the strategy typically is, is to employ several strategies in sequence so that the air passes through two or three scrubbers that independently exhibit 90 to 95% efficacy. So at the end of the day, the VOC loads tend to be quite low.
So what happens if a scrubber breaks down? I mean, all this is mechanical. It can't work 100% all the time. So is, are there backups? Are there, does the machinery stop until it's fixed? Or does the rendering process continue even though there's a broken scrubber? Do you have any knowledge of that?
So this would be certainly a better question for the folks at Pilgrim who work these plants. But typically, I would, I would guess that they have safeguards to prevent, you know, to shut down the plant when there are problems.
All right. And my last, last question, then I'll, I'll let others speak. We have a very high-scale paint operation, very successful, does outstanding work really all over the world. And I have some concern that the particulates that could emit from this process could be drawn into their building, which is very close, maybe 100 yards from the proposed site, and could, and could damage their ability or greatly curtail their ability to paint. So is, again, back to the particulates that go out of the plant into the air? And then can that be, I mean, do you have any knowledge or can you speak to that?
I don't know of any studies that have demonstrated something similar to what you're describing. So I don't know of any examples whereby emissions from a rendering plant have affected the industry of neighboring companies.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Mr. Whitehead, is it common for this type of technology to, to be developed and established with redundancy that are innate to maybe thermal oxidizers maybe being backed up by the scrubbers or vice versa? I mean, is that common? Have you, have you seen that in the past?
Yeah, it is pretty common. And so I think one thing that was alluded to about the previous speaker is you do have to keep in mind the age of the plants that you're comparing. So that may not have always been the approach. But as the industry evolves, they have begun to put in secondary measures like this to do, to manage odor for that very reason.
Okay, any more questions?
Yeah, I just want-
Yeah, I, just one. Dr. Whitehead, I'm sorry, just for clarification, I'm, I think I may have missed, you broke up a little bit at the beginning, but did you say that, um, organize, organizations that Pilgrims Pride are a member of financially support some of your research? Or, or the group that you work with?
That is correct, and I can, and provide a little bit of context for you. Uh, the research that has been supported in my lab, uh, by a group of rendering, uh, companies, is centered on developing new chemical materials to address VOC and odor emissions. And I think what it does is underscore the fact that the industry itself is serious about managing VOC emissions and, and odors associated with their pros- uh, their processes, but that is true.
Certainly, I, I, I certainly agree with that, especially given the, the history of the industry. I can see why they would be very concerned about that. Thank you, Dr. Whitehead.
Any more questions? Well, I certainly want to thank the speakers for coming today and, uh, compliment the council for the way they've asked questions. So you can tell there's been some investigating on their part going on. Thanks, y'all. All right, here we go. Remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor, are you with us?
Encourage everyone. It's a little, little different, uh, line of thought, but I keep getting a lot of things, uh, about the mask and the, uh, EMA, you know, things are sort of trending down. We're getting a lot more vaccinations done, but keep wearing the mask. That comes from, uh, the governor and all the way up. Keep wearing the mask. I think it's very important. We may have it on the run. Let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, so ju- just want to thank Deborah Gaither and the EMA again for, uh, continuing to provide us with good information. Um, and, uh, do want to congratulate them on a, on a successful event. Uh, do want to continue to encourage the public, uh, to, uh, better educate yourself on the tiers of, uh, of individuals that are eligible for vaccination at, at this time. Uh, and, uh, and try to avoid the forcing your way to the front of the line scenario. Um, and, uh, th- th- those tiers are in place, uh, for a reason. And, uh, what I would encourage people to do is if you have questions about whether or not you are eligible, uh, for, uh, the vaccine at this point, to please, uh, see your doctor, or if you don't have a doctor, please establish a relationship with one so that you can receive medical direction on how to proceed. Uh, this process works best, uh, when it's driven by healthcare professionals who understand the science. Uh, so again, want to encourage people, uh, to continue to work through your doctor to both identify locations uh, and, uh, and determine when, uh, when you're eligible. Uh, and, uh, and we thank the community in advance for being, uh, for being smart and responsible as it relates to that. That's all I have.
Thank you, Derek. Councilman Worthy?
Uh, yes, uh, I would just want to make a quick announcement. Uh, we're gonna have a job for, conjunction with the Curial Center and the City of Gaston Thursday, March the eleventh, at the venue from nine to one, nine AM to one PM, and, uh, you're required to wear a mask if you come in. If you don't have a mask, we will, uh, provide one for you. Uh, we're gonna limit the number of employers, and then we only will be letting twenty potential employees in at a time. So that is, uh, Thursday, March the eleventh, from nine AM to one PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Councilman Back?
Yes, thank you. Uh, just want to have a couple, uh, one announcement. Tomorrow at twelve o'clock at First Baptist Church Gaston Downtown, we're gonna have another food giveaway. It's gonna start at twelve noon, so we encourage everybody to come that is in need of food, and, uh, we will give out one box per car until all the boxes are given away, and so we'll have a few hundred boxes, I'm assuming. This afternoon, we're gonna be meeting in the gym there to, uh, in the Family Life Center to build those boxes, so uh, looking forward to seeing all of our friends that we've made over the summer and the last few months and, uh, during this time when we've been, uh, giving out food. Also want to, uh, just a, as a way of, uh, condolences to Dr. Cynthia Toll's family. Her uncle passed away in Texas, and, uh, Dr. Toll's had gone to the funeral, and so just want to remember her and her family and our thoughts and prayers during this time, and, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilman Wilson?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Our, our thoughts are with Dr. Toll's, um, and her travels. Um, also want to give my, um, best wishes to Councilman Cannon and his wife as they continue to recover. Um, I'm, I'm, uh, thankful that I think we're hearing some positive reports out of their, their house, so that's great news. Um, and the only other thing I want to say, um, is, uh, thank you to Kelly Pierce and Laura Cato and Tim Hardy and, um, and I know I'm forgetting several people, but, uh, over at the Gaston State Valley Street Campus, uh, Councilman Back and Madam President Toll's and myself, uh, and, and Councilman Worthy for, um, a, a period got a chance last Wednesday to spend the better part of the morning, um, at that facility over there. And for those of you guys who don't realize all of the fantastic things that go on at that Valley Street Campus, I mean, they have an HVAC program where you can come in and get licensed in HVAC and refrigeration. Uh, they have a construction program, uh, oh, Rebecca Southern at, um, the, the sonography, um, group over there where you can learn how to take sonographs and so much technology, well beyond my knowledge level. But, um, these programs are packed and continuing to grow. They're adding a dental, uh, assistance program over there that's about to come online. It's just amazing to me, all of the people in this community that work hard every day to try to provide resources and opportunities. So y'all, please take care of them. Um, and, and we're very blessed to have Gaston State as a partner, so um, it's always eye-opening and re-energizing for me, if I'm feeling a little frustrated, to go spend time with people like that who are excited about helping people in Gaston better themselves. So thank you to everybody there. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Jason, a, a, a point to note there is, uh, don't forget that the Valley Street campo- campus is an HBCU. Uh, and, uh, and much of the, the groundwork that was laid there was laid by, uh, one of our, one of our own, uh, Dr. Carl Byers, so, uh, that's a-
No, that's a great point. Uh, Derek, I've thoroughly enjoyed listening and learning about the history and where it actually started and how it ended up there. Um, it's, it's an incredible story.
Okay, um, I'm gonna start mine with, uh, big thanks to Deborah Gaither and the EMA coming back. I've got, we do get a lot of calls, where can we get a shot, where can we do this, how long will it last, so on and so forth. She gave us a way to do it, so I'm really appreciative for her coming forward this morning. Johnny and Lana Cannon, I talked to Johnny yesterday. He sounds a whole lot better. But he still, uh, when he gets up and walks around, he gets tired, so it's gonna take another week or two for him and for Lana to get up and get going. Uh, thank you all for this meeting. Is there any other discussion that we want to bring up at present time? Anything? Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you.